I didn't give you any advance notice on that because it came up too late to bring that up. But some of the boards that we're keeping, of course, are required by state law. And some that were, had indicated that we should dissolve, they're still listed on the city website. And I already spoke to Mrs. Stewart about when we have a resolution about this, to take those off. And then on the form that people fill out if they want to be on a board or committee, that it be amended and changed. That would be the clerk's office that would do that, so it would be clear.
Your Honor?
Yes. Mr. Zier.
To refresh the memory of council, as well as myself and the audience, the boards that were slated for being expunged, if you will, or dissolved, were the Advisory Committee for Persons with Disabilities, the Advisory Committee for Senior Citizens, the Ethnic Issues Advisory Board, the Board of Campus Services, the Cable Advisory Board, Troy Days Committee, and Youth Council.
Right.
The Historical Commission.
The Historical Commission is on there, too. Dissolved, Jan. 30th.
Right. The Historical Commission and the Library Board. Yes.
I think the Animal Control Appeal Board is also dissolved by resolution. And I think the Board of Campus Services has already been dissolved, too, by resolution.
Animal Control Appeal Board, this one says investigate possibility of allocating duties to the Board of zoning appeals.
I thought we dissolved it when we changed the ordinance, but I could be wrong.
I don't think so. I don't believe it. I don't think so.
No, I don't.
We can add that.
Well, it says investigate possibility of.
Your Honor, if I may.
Yes.
I believe by charter that we had to keep that Animal Appeal Board. So those are appealed process.
Right. That was the discussion, that there had to be a process by which they could appeal.
Right.
That's what your.
Yeah, right. You have to have a process that they can appeal. At the last time that we looked at this, we were going to do some further research on whether or not we could assign that to another. But there will absolutely need to be some ordinance amendments that go along with that. And with the transition and with Ms. Bittner not being here, I don't know that that's feasible for next Monday night.
Okay. But would it be possible to have it be at the Board of zoning appeals?
Mayor, I'll have to look into that.
Okay.
I'm certainly willing to do that, and we'll happily do that.
Your Honor, I spoke to Mark Miller today because essentially the Troy Museum is now operated as a 501(c)(3).
Right.
And does the City Council want to have a role in appointing, you know, the Troy Historical Society and the Troy Historical Commission? We didn't think that would be appropriate.
No. Well, and I'm here, it says Historical Commission, Historic District Commission operate at status quo. That's because of the charter, isn't it? Because of state law.
Historic District Commission, because we do have historic districts. You need to have a board that can hear all of it.
We have to have Historic District Commission.
But not historical. But you can see it's listed as district.
Yeah. Okay. Yes, Ms. Councilwoman.
Yeah. Oh, the Advisory Committee for Senior Citizen. You said it would recommend that the Advisory Board be dissolved, but continue as an advocacy group. We talked about this, and I just want to clarify what that means. And as I recall, they would have a place to meet, free of charge, at the community center. And they would appoint their own people, if council's not appointing one. What about, we're not sending anyone to the meeting, but they would do their own minutes? Would the minutes be included in the council agenda?
If it's not a city committee, then we wouldn't get it.
So they would do their own, just so I understand, because there are going to be questions, they're advocacy group, they'll have a place to meet, they appoint their own members, they could do their own minutes. If they want to bring something to the City Council, they'll just come for public comment.
Right. Yeah. And there was some discussion about the formation of a lifetime learning committee at some point, because that was brought up in Vision 2020, where some people who have been on separate committees may want to join together. And that may be something that Council may wish to do. Some of the committees, when they were originally formed, performed a specific duty and purpose that was well-served at that time. And, but then we had staff available to meet with them, and if they had certain, you know, concerns or certain matters that they needed to bring forward, they could do it. And the reason we started doing the streamlining was because we had such a reduction in staff that we no longer had people to be there with them. Anyone else on some of these that we brought up? And do you agree that we should have a resolution on the next meeting about the ones we decide tonight? Okay. Who wants to go next? Five signals here.
Well, just because. To start out kind of abruptly with, you know, getting rid of all these things, that really wasn't how we originally talked about. We talked about the new volunteer era. And if you go over to the Community Center now, and you walk in, you see quilters are in action, you see card games. I mean, so we're not trying to cut out. It's simply that we do not have enough staff to sit, to film, to do all of those things that at one time we did. And it's not the only source of communications any longer. And I think it's been so exhilarating, really, to see what's been going on at the Outdoor Education Center because of volunteers, a cleaning invasive species, and helping with education and all of the wonderful things that they're doing. The same with our wonderful museum, even the new signage and everything that looks there. It's wonderful to see how many people have become involved and active. And I think N2 is just another example tonight of the way volunteers in this community are filling the needs that before we may have had staff to do. But now, as I said, no matter what your skill level is, there's a place to volunteer in this community. It's just not organized by the city anymore. It's people doing wonderful things together because they care.
Well, there've always been groups that have joined together in the community with the special interest. And then, you know, there were city committees that were formed, and we had the banquet to appreciate that and all that stuff. So it doesn't mean that people won't be doing things in the community. It just means it'll be organized in a different fashion. Councilwoman Bell, to me.
I think it's kind of going back to our roots. When people met amongst themselves for a purpose, and then when we had a little extra, we formalized that process.
Right.
And now it's time to go back to an informal process, but make sure that we facilitate that, to give them a place or those sorts of things. I'm wondering if, that's fine, if we decide to do something formal, as we talked about 10 months ago, a lifetime learning sort of committee, then I would think that we might not only include the ethnic issues people and the senior advisors and the disability advisors, but the library board as well, the access to information. And when you look at Vision 2020, it talks about lifetime learning, and that would also be a catalyst for some other things as well. They could look at the systems within the city for learning opportunities and cultural sharing and those sorts of things. They could look at the venues that are available. And that would be particularly true of not only the Community Center, but the library, and particularly there are people with library interests on that, and the programs that are offered. And that might be, instead of having four committees, if we wanted to have one formal committee, that would be sort of an umbrella for the lifestyle, lifetime learning sort of things. And we might even find that as we try and rebuild for the 21st century, that that would have an economic development component as well.
And you know, Madam Mayor, I know that our librarian is very interested in doing her strategic plan, in her long-range plan, and I know that this will be a source of that. So again, you know, use all of those elements of people in the preferred futures. I know this was kind of dismissed tonight by one of our, one of our speakers. However, it is still full of great resources, but just some have seen fruition and some haven't. But the specific actions to the preferred future in this lifetime learning task force are really, really very good and comprehensive. So I would suggest, I'm sure that the librarian is looking at this as she goes forward, and I know that there have been many, many volunteers who've come out for the library specifically, and that certainly we can use them, so it's wonderful.
Well, I think that committees, sometimes, if you look at, you know, we ask for information about what committees have actually done, sometimes committees tend to get stuck in the minutia of, I think that's your.
I use it a lot.
The minutia of things, and then they don't look out toward the future, kind of thing. And I think encouraging with restructuring some kind of committee will give that interaction with people, which would be really good. And, but, so I think we're on the right trail here. And I appreciate staff sending out all the information today, including the names of people that were on committees or interested, et cetera, because it gives us a chance to kind of look through again, to see what's there. And of course, all of the ones that we're keeping, because they're required by state law, those are meeting their particular purpose, and we continue to do that, so.
I think for the time being, oh, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Well, just in line with what you were saying, it would be a good thing for us in our reorganization to maybe do something that's more task-oriented, that we can't, if we're not going to continue the same structure, but we can take a look at issues that are coming towards us, that we want input from residents, businesses. I think over the last year, we've all gotten some experience in terms of getting the community members together to get feedback from them and have community conversations, that we can do that again, more issue-oriented than creating longstanding or long-term.
Yes.
Structures, committee structures within our organization, when we're not really sure where we're going to end up on the other side after we finish transition and we kind of get through some of the difficulties that we've been getting through. So I think it's still important to utilize that, but it might be, it might look a little bit different. It might be more issue-oriented, where we can put something together and get feedback and then move forward on an issue, rather than having all sorts of individual committees where they have to be monitored in the minutes that are taken care of, and then you've got to get the information here before we can really do something with it. I guess, we hadn't really talked about this, and I know Youth Council is one that we're going to disband for the time being, but in the materials, I noticed that we don't really talk about it that much in the conversations that we've had thus far with boards and committees, but the opportunities to have student reps. And I think one of the things that we might want to think about, just in terms of what we're left with, the committees that we're left with, to make that something that's a priority. So we're going to probably be losing a little bit of coordination, it sounds like, with the Ethnic Issues Advisory Board that was doing some things with the school district, and then obviously Youth Council. We're going to dissolve that for the time being, but really maybe possibly focusing on the opportunity for a student rep to become an appointment to the boards that are, we're going to maintain, so that we still have that interaction, I guess, with that best of the community. So it's something to consider, as long as that's still available to us. I don't know how much that's promoted at this point, but it might be something we can focus on a little bit more if we're going to remove some of these other committees for the time being.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yeah. And circling back to the Advisory Committee for Senior Citizens, I know they feel like they've been in limbo, so I think this is good. We can communicate to them now what they really are as advocacy group. They can take their own minutes, have a meeting room, and so forth. I know that the school district has assigned a person to the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, and they go there and participate in the meeting with us, and maybe bring a report to the seniors as to what's happening in the school district and so forth. And I know they appreciate that, and they feel like they have some voice and are being listened to. Question is, we know they can come to the council and address us in public comment, but is there a problem if this advocacy group were to invite a member of council to come and listen to them in the meeting, hear them in the meeting? Is there an issue with that? Because I have gone along with Paula before to the meeting, and enjoyed it. But they really, if they want to address the council, they need to come. And if they want just an ear or to get some advice or something, I'd be happy to go to the meeting from time to time. Is that an issue?
Let us know.
Mayor, just the only issue that there might be is if there's a quorum of city council members that are there and deliberation occurs, then that could potentially, you know, be an issue, certainly would be violation of the meetings act. Just another thing to keep in mind, Mayor, as well, is that if you do take formal action to create a committee, whether it's by resolution or, you know, other formal action, then they would be subject to the Open Meetings Act. So that is just something to keep in mind, so just in your deliberations, whether you decide to do an informal, they create their own, or whether it's a formal resolution creating this kind of umbrella committee. If it's the umbrella committee that's done by formal resolution, then they will have to comply with the open meetings.
Okay. Councilwoman Slater?
Just a question about the library advisory board. If that's dissolved, do you need to do something with Chapter 9?
I'm certain that we will have to do some major amendments to Chapter 9.
Okay. Does it have to be done before you dissolve? Or can it be done after?
It would make the most sense to kind of do them at the same time, I would think. And I'd like to have some time to do some research on that. I mean, certainly the ones that are no brainers and require no ordinance amendment, certainly, I'm sure Ms. Bittner, although she's not available right now, I'm sure that some kind of a resolution can be prepared for your meeting by the agenda deadline of tomorrow.
The other thing is, we want to get input from Mrs. Russ, our library director, what she sees the role of a library board. I think, I think that's important. Mr. Miller?
Madam Mayor, Kathy Russ has indicated to me that she has given this some thought, so.
Okay.
She definitely could submit what she thinks she could work with or without a board, but the problem is she needs to have members there.
Right. Okay.
To be able to do it.
And your honor, also keen on what Councilwoman Corwin said when Mark and Kathy and I spoke, there's really three assignments that I gave them, you know. One is get a budget here for September 29th. And we're working on that in conjunction with Tom Darling as well. And it's, it's not just a point where it's one year, it's a three-year budget with a five-year forecast. Number two is hire people as soon as we can. I've already approved two positions, because we're really just stumbling along there without an adequate number of staff. And then three was to essentially work on a strategic plan. And that involves stakeholders that go beyond residents of the city, if you will. Residents, obviously, would involve the Chamber of Commerce, it would involve Walsh College, it would involve the business community that are not chamber members, automation alley, perhaps. And so we were looking at, you know, working in that respect as well. That could be in lieu of or in addition to a library board.
Whilst they just have four full-time people, I know that they were at the breaking point. So it's good to learn that they can get a structure in there.
Yes.
For dealing with some of these things. However, we do want this piece finished.
So I guess the conclusion of our study session is that we're going to have a formal resolution for the next meetings. And would you like that resolution to include a section that forms a lifetime learning committee? Or you want to save that for another time?
Don't let that out.
Okay.
It's more deliberation.
That's, oh, there. Well, I was just clarifying, so we, when we get to the next meeting, we'll know.
And what could even be formed with that?
And for further clarification, I think that, keen on what Mrs. Bloom said, we'll advance the no-brainers. You know, if there's ordinance, what needs to be done and so forth and so on, I thought that was going to be a later date. Is that correct? Is that what I heard?
Yes.
Well, she said. What, you're saying no, she's saying yes. Councilwoman, Mayor Corwin, what are you?
I thought we were bringing all this forward. The only one that we were, that needs to have backup work is going to be done by our attorney and the clerk.
Right.
Animal Control Appeal Board is another one that I'm not able to do. With those two exceptions, all of the other ones.
Everything else is a single resolution.
Are simple resolutions. They do not require any ordinance amendments.
Right. That's good. Yeah, that's correct.
The other piece that you have mentioned before, Mayor, and I don't know whether it needs to be in the resolution or not, is thanking everyone, and you talked about with a letter.
Yes, that was the other thing that we mentioned, and I think it's very important, just as we did, to thank the Planning Commission and staff members for their phenomenal work with the master plan and the zoning ordinance, that each of the people that have served on committees receive a thank you letter. I think that's very important. You all agree?
Yes.
Okay, good. I don't want it just to be what I've said. I would assume that, but you don't. Yes, Councilwoman Harlan?
Two things. One is, I believe the Chapter 9 also requires that the library budget be essentially submitted to the library advisory board prior to our review and approval as well. And at least until, you know, we have language to change that part of the city code, I think it's probably to, in our best position to keep the library advisory board. Although my personal opinion is that, you know, especially with the importance of library affinity, I think to actually have a citizens advisory board for this particular facility and entity, I think is extremely important. And we've never had a shortage of people wanting to serve on that board. There's always been, you know, three or four people on a waiting list that have wanted to serve. And I don't think, I don't think it really takes too much city resources either, so I would like us to at least consider keeping that board on.
And if I may, and I don't have the code in front of me, but I'm sure that Laurie can correct me if I'm mistaken, but I believe the way the ordinance language reads is that the library board submits a budget recommendation to the city manager, who may or may not consider it in making a budget recommendation to City Council. That's how I think that it reads.
Have you found it?
In fact, I have, Mayor. I prepared then what I thought I was. It does, Section 7, "Not later than February 15th of each year, the library advisory board shall furnish the city manager with recommendations regarding proposed library programs for the ensuing fiscal year, which the manager shall review and consider in preparing the library budget to be submitted to City Council. The budget shall be reviewed by the board prior to submission to the City Council." Section 7.
And this is a budget that is actually prepared by the library director, and it's given to the library board to look at and see if it meets the needs that, you know, it has. And then it comes to the manager, then it's up to the manager to decide when it comes forward, then through the process.
I consider it.
Right.
Now, my question is that since there is not a library board, and I have an assignment to have a library budget by September 29th. You know, I don't know how to accomplish that. If there's not a library board.
At this point, because we have dedicated funding now for the library, it is a different situation than when the charter was originally set up. So I would think that the wording should be appropriate in the charter, you want to match up. What do you all think of that? I see heads shaking. Councilwoman Slater?
Well, I think that would seem logical to me.
Because it's a different situation now.
Now we have a dedicated.
Right.
So that should be reflected in the charter.
And I don't know, well, it's up to you, Laurie, to decide, but in other communities where they have dedicated funding for their library, is their library board set up differently than when it is just part of the general budget?
Our current situation and our current Chapter 9 is a very unique situation.
Okay. Well, that's why I'm asking that maybe we want to look at how some other communities have handled it because of the fact they have a dedicated village, and how is their library board? I think that would be helpful.
Just for a point of clarification.
This is a first for us.
I'm going to continue to have Mark and Kathy and Tom Darling look at a budget for the library in three years by work at, and plan presenting it to you in September.
Right. I think it's important that because of the decline in revenues over, over the years, there's going to be less coming in, even at the .7, that it's, for that time period of the three to five years, not just year by year, because it's going to change. Councilwoman Slater?
Well, I just, if we could make sure that we get the language changed by the date of the budget, that seems reasonable, doesn't it, by September, so that we can follow a different procedure then?
I will do my very best to work with Kathy Russ and to work with the clerk and to get some language changes for the ordinance. Again, a lot of that depends, though, on what direction the strategic plan calls for. And I think that there are some discussions that do have to take place before I just bring you some ordinance language. But we will do our best to bring you something for you to consider, and then perhaps if that's not the direction the council is inclined to go, then we can modify it.
Councilwoman Slater, I saw you, I mean, Councilwoman Bell, I saw you signal.
Sure. Just a question for the city managers, you're preparing this budget. The .7 mils, is it your intention to use the .7 mils to establish the budget? Is that your budget number, you're working backwards from that? Are you starting with a blank piece of paper to put together a budget that may be less than .7 mils? What's the?
I'm going to be, and that's going to be about three minutes long, if you don't mind.
Okay.
It's important. Start holistically. Holistically, a lot of municipalities start with a point, okay? And a point has no depth, and it has no creativity and no forecast. And they say, this is my revenue point for one year, and then they have a chaotic look at expenditures to try to match that revenue, okay? That's a definition, my definition of a one-year budget, a point. And then the following year, you go through a bunch of machinations and chaotic political maneuvers and have another point, and try to make revenues and match expenditures. The governing body in Troy didn't want to operate that way. They wanted to operate on a trend, which in our history has been about 98% accurate. A trend with a three-year budget, because it's more than a point, it's a line, it's a revenue stream, that's declining. And then you indicated expenses that you wanted to correlate with that revenue stream, even though the expenses were more than what the revenue was, there was a fund balance. With the library, the charge that I gave Tom Darling and Mark and Kathy is to take that .7 mils, but you can't spend all of it the first year that we're proposing, because in subsequent years, it's more than a point, your revenue is going to decline, and we don't want to hire all these people and then say, oh, no, now I have to lay off 12% of our entire force in programming. So what I want them to do is to force essentially a planning out, using .7 mils as a revenue source that's equalized, so there'll be essentially a .7 mil levy, but there'll be a fund balance in line to even out in subsequent years. And that would be presented to the council for consideration. Now, that's what I'd like to do. If you want to have adherence to the library board ordinance, then before, three weeks from now, you have to appoint a library board, and I've got to get them smart on what our methodology is, so they can recommend something to me, which I may consider in recommending something to you.
I've got a question.
Yes, Councilwoman Harlan?
When we went down this road to withhold appointments, we didn't dissolve the library board. And this council had actually said that anybody who is not reappointed will continue until their, so I don't understand how we don't have a library board.
I was advised, if I may respond, I was advised by the city clerk that there are no members of the library board except Cool, and I forgot it was last name.
Gari.
Gari? Cool, Gari is the only member. I was advised it's on the library board, the others have expired.
This is a whole list of people that have expired on all different boards and committees, and it's my understanding that they were to continue until they were either reappointed or replaced. So I mean, I think it's the same situation on that board as well. So I mean, I think it's the same situation on that board as well.
And actually, this list that we got, Councilwoman Horlak, was just to indicate the boards and what they were. It's not the very latest data and information, because when I received this today, I thought, blimey, but that year doesn't, you know, coordinate anything. But it was just to give us all, because you know how we used to get a list every month, and then we'd reappoint, and all that, and we'd get those lists for years and years? Anyway, that's why the list is there.
I think Mr. Horlak is correct, there's a board, but it has one member. It's up to you to decide what you want to do with it.
Well, if they don't have a quorum, I don't know how they can meet as a board.
No, my point is that there's the board, and consistent with the resolution passed by the city council, all of the members are still members of that board and active.
I think that, I think his point is right. I think what we're seeing is that things have changed, that that language in Chapter 9 no longer fits the time, nor really the practice of what we, nor the intent of what we want to do going forward. And the idea of looking at volunteers in a new way is really what we're doing, and that's where that whole lifelong learning committee comes up, using, but involving a whole variety of people, you name some. Certainly, the school districts might want to send some people, as they did for this, on input on that. But we're not clarifying that that must be it, but there should really be a change in the oversight. The appropriate place for that oversight, to me, on a budget, is not an advisory board. The appropriate place for that budget oversight is with council. So I think that the paradigm is wrong on that. May have, for some reason, it's in there, but I don't think it's a good fit. I don't even think, under the law, it's a good fit. It's the elected body that has the oversight for that budget.
Right. And it's, yeah, just imperative that the budget that the library have be looked at over the longer time span here because of the decline of the revenue coming in, and we've been dealing with that all along, and these other people really have not been dealing with it. I don't know who's first, who's second here. Councilwoman McGinnis?
Well, I think that what Councilwoman Horlak is saying, in fact, is that even if several members of the Library Advisory Board's terms have expired, the practice that we've been using for the other boards, that we've been waiting to make new appointments, was that even though someone's term has expired, they're going to remain on until we've either decided what to do with that board, which apparently a lot of them have just been hanging in limbo since last year, or we've decided to appoint someone else. So I think that in effect solves our issue with the budget and needing a recommendation from the Library Advisory Board, that those members, even though their terms have expired, are still participating in that board until the board is either dissolved or new appointments are made, then they're together for purposes of looking at whatever Cathy Russ's budget proposal is going to be and making a recommendation to you so that you can bring it to us on the 29th. We can still move forward, even if we have to wait for a little bit to get the appropriate language to amend the ordinance.
Isn't it September 26th is what it says on here? It is. Yeah, okay.
All mistakes are mine, okay? That said, I sit on the Building Board of Appeals, and we have a vacancy, and that person, his term expired, he no longer shows up, we're one person short. We didn't say, come on, come on and join us until you get reappointed by the board, by the city council. So I'm not sure if every committee is operating in that respect. I'll look for a resolution that says that if someone is on a board and their membership expires, if there's no action by the city council, they're still a member. I'll look for that resolution.
I don't think we had a resolution. Mrs. Bloom?
They have no board.
Actually, we do, because that's
You do have a resolution?
Well, they continue on, there are some rare exceptions, but they do continue on unless and until they're appointed. The exceptions to this would be if they no longer qualify. For example, they are no longer a resident of the city, and residency in the city is a requirement.
We didn't have a separate resolution that said that.
No, you won't find a separate resolution. And it may have been in the resolution saying that they were going to be in limbo. I don't know, I haven't looked at that prior to today. I would just indicate also that it requires the Library Advisory Board to review the budget, but it does not give them the oversight of the budget. So, I mean, it's a review, it's not an oversight. I will, again, it's possible that we can get changes to Chapter 9 to you before September 29th. We will, that's the goal, we will try and work towards that. I don't know how complicated it's going to be as far as what replaces it. That's the issue, is what do you have that replaces it? And that's, I just, I can't tell you that right now without talking with Cathy Russ. But we will do our very best.
Okay. Councilwoman Horlak?
It's clear to me that with the timeline that we have, September the 29th, that 26.
Twenty-six.
Mr. Zurley and Cathy Russ have to proceed
Yes.
With the doing of budget. If the Library Advisory Board wants to come on, take a look at it and give inputs, you can't wait on the Library Advisory Board, we won't have a budget. But I certainly would want their input, and anybody that was on the board, if they haven't been, if they haven't moved or whatever, still should give input to Cathy and do that, but don't hold up. You can't wait for these people who haven't served for more than a year to put together a budget. That has to be done by
Well, they're not going to put together a budget anyway, just say review.
Review, but let them review, but they can't hold up. If they can't get together and have a quorum and review, that should not stop the process, I guess, that's the point. If they can review and give input, it should be taken into consideration, but it should not stop the process of getting a budget done by September 29th. That's my opinion.
I'll be happy to share it with them.
Who's signaling here? I see signals.
Just two quick things. Just two quick things. You know, the reason point seven was chosen was for a three or for a five-year trend.
Yes.
So, you know, it makes sense that that's what you, that's why it was chosen, and that's the way it should be used. So we knew there was going to be more funding in the first year than there was in the fifth year, so, you know, what Mr. Zurley's doing is exactly what we chose to have happen there, so that's good.
Okay.
Yeah. The other thing is, we've made a decision to dissolve the library board, is that correct? I know Councilman Horlak said he didn't want to do that, but we as a group, we've made that decision to dissolve it?
Yes.
Correct? I saw it. Councilwoman, go to me, say it again.
Well, I, you know, we have ordinances, and we expect everyone else to follow them, so I think we have some obligation to follow them. So at the very least, I would say that John, Mark, Cathy decide what time is appropriate. Send a message to all of the people who are technically still on that Library Advisory Board, say, "We're meeting to let you review the budget this night, or this afternoon, or whatever," and do it, so that we have at least called that, convened that board for purposes of compliance with the ordinance. I absolutely believe that if we have rules, we have to attempt to follow them, and we can't just say, oh, well, we can't do that, we don't have time.
That's right. Whoever shows, maybe whoever does, it does.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right, there's consensus on that. Consensus on that. Councilwoman Horlak?
That was one of my two points. My other point, and perhaps I didn't state it very well, is that, you know, this community voluntarily decided to give the city of Troy an additional point seven mils to operate the library, and so I think it's important to continue that community engagement through the enabling of Volunteer Citizens Advisory Board. And I'm not really, I'm not really sure that I understand why the majority of the city council wants to disband that voluntary, that volunteer advisory board after we simply just came back from asking the community to donate some additional funds through increased tax rate to the city to operate that library. It seems incongruous to me, it really does.
The library board didn't ask the citizens to do the money.
The city council did.
That's what you said.
City council did.
City council did.
Right.
The library board didn't.
The city council asked the citizens to increase the tax rate.
Madam Mayor, I think we had talked about just broadening the volunteer groups who come in to do these things.
And it's fine.
On whatever form they take, I don't think it anymore has to be
But we don't want to have a hole there, so, I mean,
I agree.
Until that, until that organization is formed, let's at least keep the Library Advisory Board.
And that's here from the librarian, ideas on that.
That's why I said, let's ask Mrs. Russ, because we haven't heard.
Right, and we'll have her coming.
Was there anything else on here for our study session? Okay, then we're in adjournment.